We're going to call the Tuesday, February 2nd. We're going to call the Tuesday, March 1st, 2016, Manistee City Council Meeting to Order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, can you please take the roll?
Mayor Kenny?
Here.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Here.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Here.
City manager?
Here.
City attorney?
Here.
DPW director?
Here.
Finance director?
Here.
City engineer?
Here.
And please, to board sergeant.
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments and agenda-related items. Does anyone have comment on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk on the consent agenda concerned by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses, and notification regarding next work session. Is your motion?
I'll make a motion, council take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion by councilmember Smith, supported by councilmember Goodsky, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration of local revenue sharing board grant applications. The local revenue sharing board distributes 2% money from the Little River Casino. The deadline for the 2016 Cycle 1 applications is Friday, March 4, 2016, at 5:00 PM. City staff has prepared two grant applications for submission to the local revenue sharing board. Council has requested an opportunity to approve individual grant applications. This agenda item will include two separate motions, one for each grant application. At this time, council could take action to authorize the submission of a grant application to the local revenue sharing board for matching funds for FEMA grant to purchase JAWS tools and a Lucas automatic CPR device in the amount of $5,000.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by councilmember Zalinski, support by councilmember Beaton, to approve the JAWS tools and Lucas automatic CPR for $5,000. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Also, council can take action to authorize submission of a grant application to the local revenue sharing board for swim buoy replacements in the amount of $2,300.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
I have a motion by councilmember Smith, supported by councilmember Zalinski, to approve the buoy replacements of $2,300. Is there any further discussion?
Is that a question?
They seem to disappear, Jeff. Is that just because of the wave action and stuff?
Yes, almost exclusively to the wave action. The attachment mechanisms underneath will eventually just break and let go.
The new ones, is there any upgrade or anything that can be done to prevent that?
We haven't found anything that would be what I would consider cost-effective as replacements. The ones that we're proposing to purchase are actually a little bit, they're not quite as tall, but they're less expensive. We're hoping if we can replace this set, then we can just start buying a couple every year to keep that supply ready. One clarification, we just found out today that our low bid quote, they went up $50 each. So, we can either amend the grant amount from $2,300 and request $3,050, or we can use $750 out of the parts as match on this grant application.
I would recommend that we apply for the $3,050, but I would also need a change. In motion. Is there any other questions for Jeff?
I'll make a motion to amend it. I'll second.
I have a motion by councilmember Smith to change the amount from $2,300 to $3,050, supported by councilmember Zalinski. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
And councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next consideration, we introduce ordinance 16-01 fireworks. At their work session on Friday, February 9, 2016, city council discussed the current ordinance and various modifications attempted in the past. A majority of council requested that city attorney prepare a more restrictive ordinance with more latitude around the 4th of July. A draft has been prepared and is attached. If the ordinance is introduced this evening, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. Basically, the change includes no person should ignite, discharge, or use consumer fireworks in the city except for the following. The day preceding, the day of, and the day after a national holiday, except between the hours of 1:00 AM and 8:00 AM on those days. And five days preceding July 4th, on July 4th, and five days after July 4th, except between the hours of 1:00 AM and 8:00 AM on those days. At this time, council could take action to introduce ordinance 16-01.
Need a motion? I will make that motion.
Is there support for that motion? Is there support for that motion? Does that motion get out? Next, we'll move on to consideration of five-year contract for biosolids and land application. A normal bi project to the city's wastewater treatment process includes 750,000 to 1,200,000 gallons of biosolids annually. The biosolids are used in agricultural fields as a soil amendment. The city has historically contracted for the removal of biosolids from the plant for land application on a five-year basis. Bids were advertised with two bids being received. The low bid is being recommended. The value of the contract is estimated at $40,680 in the first year, assuming a volume of 1.2 million gallons. The agreement under consideration was prepared by the city attorney.
I'll make a motion that council take action to approve the five-year contract, Biotech. Second.
I have a motion by councilmember Goodsky, supported by councilmember Smith, to approve the five-year contract with Biotech. Is there any discussion?
I've got a question. Mr. Mercula, it says here that the city has historical contracts. Are there other options?
Ms. Parkback, as I could see, that we've always done a five-year contract, and we've been able to get price stabilization based on that.
Thank you.
We're very happy with the bids that we got. In fact, reduces, these prices are lower than what the last, what we paid last year. So, there's going to be about a $5,000, $6,000 reduction anticipated in the upcoming budget.
Okay. There's an escalation through the term of the contract, is there not?
Right. It's pretty minor, but there is an escalation at each of the bids.
Thank you.
Not just a question about, because I don't know exactly what. Does one company do more than another one? Are they both equal? Are they?
The process that they use is exactly the same. We load trucks, they take those trucks out to local agricultural fields, and then it's a sludge, but the bio is put back into the soil as an amendment. This company is out of Beulah, so there's probably a little less trucking and mobilization effort for them. And we know that the company that we've used to center grow in the past, a lot of their employees work for this company, so very comfortable with the contractor.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of license agreement extension with Consumers Energy for environmental testing on Joan Street. In 1999, the city of Manistee entered into a license agreement with Consumers Energy for conducting investigation on the environmental condition of the property around the former Manistee manufactured gas plant for a portion of the Joan Street right-of-way. Consumers Energy is requesting an extension until December 31, 2017, to continue investigation and perform response activities as needed. The city attorney has reviewed and approved the license extension. Is your motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, sorry.
I'll second.
I have a motion by councilmember Goodsky, supported by councilmember Zalinski, to approve the request from Consumers Energy. Is there any discussion?
I have some questions. If there's something I can answer.
Billy, Mr. Andrew Satini is in the audience.
It seems like we've been extending it and extending it. Being new on the council, could you fill me on what is actually happening down there? What's going on? Why is the need for continuing extensions?
Okay. I just was hired at Consumers at the end of last year, so I'm still getting up to speed on all of this and site history. But as far as I know, you know, we've been doing a lot of testing to define our extent of the plume, and we're at the point now where we're just doing a little bit more testing to comply with MDQ requirements so that we can come into doing removal action.
Do you know what you're testing for? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
What are we testing for?
What are we testing?
MGP products, so benzene, tylenine, the BTEX, poly-PAHs, metals, kind of the whole gamut.
And the concern is that that might get into the water system?
Yes.
In reading some of the background on the testing, this has been going on about 17 years now, and it also indicates possible excavation of soil, capping, and backfill. Has any of that taken place thus far?
No. And right now, as far as I know, right now, all we've been doing is a lot of testing. There's been some pilot studies to try to figure out what's the best method to handle the contamination at the site.
Is there an end game in sight? Is there a target?
Yes. Our plan is for this year, to work with the EK, we're going to give them a plan to, at that property in the upland portion, to do in-situ stabilization and solidification of the soils, which would be in the, I think in the pamphlet, was excavate 15 feet, pull that back, and then from 15 feet down to, if there's a clay unit, we would use basically augers, drill down, add amendments like cement, some other stuff, something for sulfate, to solidify and encapsulate the contaminants that are there. So basically, you're just going to have one big mass underground backfill of clean soil.
Has any testing suggested that there are hazardous levels of contaminants at the site, or is this more precautionary?
I have not looked into that. I would assume, just based on other MGP sites, that there are hazards which are there, and that's why we're doing these actions for that.
Any questions?
I'll just add one more. So, this is an extension of an existing agreement that was started in 99, and kind of every year or two, we've, you know, asked for an extension. And so this doesn't include actual response activity. So you'll, you know, at some point in the near future, I'll come back and say, here, this is our plan, and we want to amend this agreement to include going in and doing a response activity, to have ultimate closure of the site.
Thank you. Michelle, can you please take the roll?
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next, move on to notices, communication, announcements. A further part of each council meeting is report from cooperating agency, organization, or department. Tonight, Mr. Kenny Cott will report on the activities in the Manistee Recreation Association.
All right. Good evening. Again, my name is Kenny Cott. I'm here from the Manistee Recreation Association. Just finished about, just over a year of my first year as the executive director of the MRA. Things are going great for me. Now it's my turn to give you guys a glimpse of what we've been doing for the last year and a half since, in 2015, so. Just an overview of some of the programs that we did offer back in 2015. A lot of the usual suspects. Our soft soccer clinic is just our kindergarten level. They come in for a couple hours on a weekend, do a fun soccer, they get a medal and a t-shirt and a little ball. Soccer club is our older kids soccer, which is ages 10 to about 18. That's a traveling league that goes around to the Muskegon area. We're the farthest north in that. MRA soccer is kindergarten through 5th grade. The British soccer camp is a really neat program that we do, and it's pretty popular in throughout the state of Michigan, actually throughout the whole country. But we bring in coaches from the United Kingdom, from England, that come stay with some of our participants for a week and teach their style of soccer to us. It's a really neat camp. It's a really popular thing that we've been doing. I'm looking forward to that again this year. It's really neat to get some insight from them from a different country, just the whole different area in the world thing, so. Obviously, our baseball league, we have T-ball, we have machine pitch league. We don't do the Little League. I know it's commonly miscommunicated. People think we do. We go 3rd to 5th grade with machine pitch. Little League is through the county. It's a different organization. We have both of our tennis camps, all of our swim programs that we've done, all the way up from ages 6 months to 12. Our ski snowboard co-op with Crystal Mountain. And the underlying items here, a couple new things that we added this past year. We did a volleyball tournament on the 4th of July down at First Street Beach. We didn't get a whole lot of time to promote it, but we still had four teams, and they had a blast. It was a really good program. I hope we can continue to do that again this year. We started 1st and 2nd grade flag football, really well-received by everybody that participated in it, extremely safe. It was a great program from start to finish. And then just this past January, in 2016, actually, we did start a 3rd and 4th grade basketball program that we've coordinated with all the county schools, so. Made a few changes to what we normally do this past year, and we'll talk a little bit more about what we're going to do here in 2016 and the future. Some of the community involvement that we've had, obviously, what we do cannot be done without community involvement. Groups like the Kiwanis, the Manistee, Bear Lake, Oneakama Schools, all the way throughout the county, KND as well has worked with us on a few things, the Paint Aquatics Center, all of our community sponsors that we've had. We had 26 this past year, which is, we increased slightly from previous years. Crystal Mountain Resort. The volunteers that we've had throughout the years have just been incredible, and the 150 that I have listed here are the ones that I had documented for, that I actually filled out volunteer forms. Many parents just came in and helped out with practices, or snacks, or everything else. So, in my opinion, it's definitely over, probably closer to 200 each year. We also had participation from the 11 of the different townships in Manistee County, along with the city. I did note that the city had, city manistee had 533 registrations in 2015, which was 38% of our overall registrations. That's the highest that we've had for the city manistee in the last five, one of the highest in the last five years. So, things are really turning around. Our overall participation this year was over 125, 130 more than we had in 2014. So it was a really good year for participation for all of our programs. Another thing that I did note on here too, the MRA did help get involved with the Turkey Bowl Annual Food Drive. I'm not familiar, if you're familiar with what we did over there. We had it at Manistee High School this year. It used to be at MCC. A bunch of guys get together the day before Thanksgiving and play a football game, raise funds for the local food pantries in the area, either by donations or helping out with different financial means here and there. So it's a really good program. I'm hoping to continue to get involved back again in the future. One thing that the MRA does every year is we hand out our Child Shadle Award. The board of directors and myself sit down, and we try to figure out, you know, who is an individual or family in an organization of Manistee County, and we recognize them that contribute significantly to the recreational quality of life throughout the county. This year, the recipients of that award were David and Hillary Edmondson for the individual award, and MS Creative Services for the organization. So, I'm having you see David and Hillary accepting their awards, and Mark and Karen and Sandstut for MS Creative. Both of them really, you know, kind of exemplify what we do as far as volunteering, either financially or just donating their time, anything else that they can do. I felt that they both very, very easily deserved this award, and we're glad to present it to them. Just a list of some of the sponsors that we had, some of our main sponsors that contribute, maybe slightly more than others. You know, a lot of community involvement that we have here. We're still united by the agency, as you see up there. We did get a bunch, I should say a bunch, we had about three or four new sponsors that we hadn't had in the past, and this year already, we're getting more sponsors than we've had. So, the community is starting to realize what we're doing, and not that they hadn't in the past, but they're really starting to get behind us, it seems, and I'm very grateful for that. Appropriations. So, we receive financial assistance from these different townships, along with the city of Manistee, and a small amount from the county of Manistee. So, Philer Township, Manistee Township, Oneakama, Brown, and Bear Lake Townships have given to us in the past. However, just this past January, Norman Township has also decided to contribute to our programs. Aside from the county on this list, everyone that lives in any of these townships or the city of Manistee receive a reduced rate for their participation in our programs, based on the contribution from the governmental entity. So, the list is growing. I'm glad to see that. We're getting people involved from all over the county, and that's exactly what we're trying to do. Scholarships are a very big thing we do. They're available for those that may need assistance with registration fees. So basically, if anyone has any questions, and if they may or may not be able to afford any of our program fees, they can come into the office, confidentially fill out a form, and if they qualify based on the state of Michigan guidelines, we're able to waive some or all of their fees for them to participate in our program. So, it's a great thing that way we don't turn away anyone that wants to participate based on financial means. In 2015, we provided 72 scholarships totaling $2,921. The best thing that I really like to see from this is, even though our registrations were up significantly last year, our scholarships that we provided were down. So, people aren't using as many of them, which is a good thing, but they are there to be used for anyone that needs them, but it's a good thing that people are in financial need at this point, or as much as they have in the past. And that's available to anyone in Manistee County regardless of if they are in participating residence or not. That's just something that we provide to make sure everyone that wants to can get part, can be part of our programs. So, looking ahead, there's a few things that we're looking at doing at this point, among many others that we've discussed just in the past month or so. There's a soccer camp that we're trying to get for Grand Valley State's boys. I think they have a club team. I think they actually have a full division program. However, he is an energetic guy. He's looking to bring one of his camps to Manistee. I had him come in for a little bit of a promo a couple weeks ago. Great idea. I love the guy. He seems very intense. I think the kids have learned a lot from this program. I've already added a couple smaller age groups to our soccer club. Usually, it was ages roughly 12 all the way up to 18. I added U-11, which is underage, to our soccer club teams, trying to expand that, get the kids that want to play soccer a little bit more of an opportunity at a competitive level. I've been approached about men's basketball league. Now, I know that's something we've done in the past, kind of faded out not too long ago, but there's a lot of interest. In fact, I know by a brethren area, they've already put together a small league that they're running with other communities. I think that's definitely something that we can get involved in, assuming we can find a good place to provide that program. And an idea that we've been really tossing around that I would like to get going is an arts, maybe not potentially arts and crafts, but just an arts program for the parents and kids to do together, or just for the kids to do after school. A lot of what we do focuses on athletics, and there's a big group of not just kids, but adults as well that like to have artisan outlet. And if we can find a place that we can then work with them to express themselves in that way, great. We just kind of started in the past fall, working on something with that, but we're kind of stalled out as far as where are we going to do it, and who can we have teach these, but we're definitely looking into that. You know, there's a lot of potential there for something that we haven't really focused on in the past. Questions, I guess? I'm open to ideas. I'd love to hear what council has to say about things that maybe you think we should be doing, or could be doing better, or anything at all. I welcome any questions at all. Anything at all.
No, I think you're doing a good job.
Thank you.
I'd like to see the men's basketball, be good to see more, see adult. I know I work, there's a lot of young people in their 20s and 30s looking for stuff to do, and I know a former community I've lived in, they have a ton of like adult volleyball leagues.
Yep. That's something, and especially just with the tournament that we did last year, there was a lot of interest from that alone, saying, hey, can we get this going? I couldn't get enough last summer of consistent participation to keep a league going, but it's definitely something that we would be more than willing to take on, and hopefully we can get that going earlier than we did this past year, so.
Just a question, we try to be universal. We try to make our community universally accessible to forever everybody. Do you have programs for people who have challenges?
Not specifically, but should there be a need for it, we would definitely address it. I haven't actually had anyone approach me yet. I take that back. Last year, I was approached by a group that worked with people with disabilities, mostly mental, and asked if they could do a baseball program of some sort, and I said, by all means, you know, let's see what we can do, let's try and put something together. They actually didn't contact me back, but something like that, I'd be more than willing to take on. I just need a little bit of time to prepare. As I said, we haven't had any real need for that as of right now. We would definitely be willing to take that on.
I think you're doing a great job. I would like to see one or two programs for seniors.
Yep. And that's something too.
You know, chair volleyball is my favorite.
I would imagine that. I've been working, I've talked to Sarah Howard, the council agent, a few times, and we're trying to make things that we can work on together and find programs. I know Pickle Wall was the one thing that I was really, really trying to get going last year, and it just, I couldn't get a court found by the time we did it, an outdoor court. But, you know, with that whole big armory building down there, who knows what's going to happen with that down in the future? I mean, there'd be definite possibilities for us to work with them, should they be the ones that end up moving in there down the road. But there's a lot of potential and other places as well for us to work with them.
When you look at partnering programs, and I'm familiar with Kiwanis because I'm a member there in the tennis camp. This year, Manistee Elks is doubling their grant money from 2,000 to 4,000 for a first tee golf program during the summer, being held at the Comfort Club. We also do a hoop shoot, which involves area youth. We also expanded Mason County for that because the Weddington Lodge merged with ours last year. There is a program on board for the Elks for soccer also, so there may be some opportunities for some partnering there, and there is grant money available from the Elks to help supplement the cost of some of those programs. So those might be worthwhile looking into and considering.
I have, everyone that I've ever been approached with, that has come to me with, hey, do you think we can borrow some equipment, or would you help work with us on this and that? I don't think I've ever turned anyone away. I really, it's, I feel it's our duty to get as much going on, you know, program-wise, whether it's athletics or anything that we can offer in the community, whether we're controlling it or not. I know the one thing that with our board, we've kind of decided is, it's hard to duplicate programs just based on the amount of participation that we have throughout Manistee County, being a little bit smaller than some other areas, but working together, definitely. You know, we just, we try not to overlap with certain things, but I would love, I would love to get involved.
You know, that's what I was thinking, because I know the hoop shoot takes place around the Christmas season and such, and involves a lot of area youth, and those that and those that finish in the top get to move on to district and state championships and such. But I know the golf program started last year, and they got two grants this year, as I said, as opposed to one, so they're looking to expand that, and maybe some opportunities to partner. You know, I'll get with you later and let you know who's running the program from the Elks and-
By all means, I appreciate that.
-see what we can do together.
I personally, I'm a big fan of golf, so I'd really like to get something going golf-wise, too. Plus, it's another one of those lifelong sports. I know tennis is, you know, one of the only things, few that we do with a lifelong sport. You teach them, teach them yelling, they can play it forever, and that's something with golf that I would like to see us kind of focus on, too.
It's council. Councilman Zalinski pointed out, the golf program last year was focused on disadvantaged youth, trying to do something for some people that couldn't normally afford it or get overlooked, and, you know, it's about the honor of the game and the rules and all that sort of thing. So I think it's sort of an interesting program, but it would be a good tie-in for the MRA.
Definitely. I'd really love to sit down and discuss that more here in the future. Any other questions, if I may?
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Next, we'll move on to concerns and comments. Citizen comment, this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens intended shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, which are limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. So you would like to make a comment? You say your name and address?
My name is Ms. Carol Pascal. My address is 610 Spruce Street. I am a taxpaying citizen, resident of Manasty County, and I know that you are working on the strategic plan right now, and you're looking at where my taxes are going to go. And I wanted to tell you how much I support the Ramstow Theater, that it is a treasure for this community in so many different ways, and that I would hope that you would realize that and take that strongly into consideration, as well as our pool, our arena. These are treasures. These are things that make our community wonderful, and as a taxpaying resident, I hope that you will really take those things into consideration. The other thing, I didn't intend to speak on, but I was surprised that nobody seconded the thing on fireworks. Since the legislature allowed the really loud fireworks now, and they seem to be going on all summer, people who have dogs, other animals, wildlife, this is extremely distressing. It's the worst time for the shelter because of all the dogs that run away, even breakaway from leashes and break out of screen doors, and it's very frightening for them, and to have unlimited, I mean, to have it the way we, I would just like more restrictions on when fireworks can be done. I don't think we need to have as much as we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to comment? Assistant, we'll move on to officials. Mr. Clark?
Nothing.
Assistant, the Attorney?
Nothing.
Assistant, the Attorney?
Nothing.
Finance Director?
Nothing.
DPW Director?
Nothing or other.
City Engineer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Beaton?
I had an opportunity to go to Frankinmuth over the weekend for an MML seminar for newly elected officials, and it was pretty much a brain dump, and it was probably one of the most worthwhile things I could have considered doing, so I'm grateful for the opportunity to go. It was an intense class, starting at 6:00 p.m. on Friday till 9:00, and then it started again at 8:00 Saturday morning and ran till 3:00. It was very well-run, it was very worthwhile, and I learned a lot, so I'm hoping to utilize what I did learn during that conference going forward.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Nothing.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Smith?
Councilman Zalinski and I had an opportunity Monday morning to attend presentation from paramedic Jim Henderson, did an outstanding job in explaining the Narcan and how that would be administered by the police department, and also went through some AED review for some new equipment, but I'd like to express my appreciation for an opportunity to attend that and gain that information. Great job.
Assistant, the Attorney?
Nothing, Your Honor.
You know, the idea is, I think it's just disappointing on council's behalf that we, again, send staff to go work on something, and less than a month later, we don't even take a motion on it without an explanation. I think that's, the fact that there was no discussion or explanation as to why we send staff to work on something the very next time, they don't even talk about it.
May I, may I oppose?
I understand, but the majority of council sent for direction to staff to work on something,